All right, I will call to order the regular agenda for Thursday, October 17, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Bivin.
Here.
Mr. Cray.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
All right, with five of us present, we can start the meeting. We'll move to closed session. I move to make a motion to move into closed session at 6:00.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a just give a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, can we move downstairs?
All right, we will, uh, we have suspended that closed session, so go back and, okay. Uh, we will zoom in public sessions, regular meeting on Thursday, October 17th, 2:00 AM at 7:01 PM. Forgive me, I have a call to, um, my husband to deal with that. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Cardiano.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mrs. Marie.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
move to number four, the pledge of allegiance. I think we have some students from Hyman.
Good evening, board. You've got some students here from Hyman, you're right. This is the environmental club, and they're going to lead us in the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no reason, justice, or
Hello.
I'm Lisa Franklin. This is, yeah. I'm Lisa Franklin, and this is Sam Jorgensen. We are the sponsors of the Hyman Environmental Club, and we have four of our members here who will tell you very briefly, who's doing for products, everything else.
I'm Ava Partridge, and I am in eighth grade. Over the summer, several members of our environmental club worked on the garden, watering it, weeding it, and helping it to look beautiful. Last school year, we received information on different types of native plants and insects and how to care for them. An M C C volunteer, from an M C C volunteer. Since then, we have implemented many of those teachings and now have a flourishing garden that we were able to harvest a small crop from earlier this year. Thank you for your
Hello, my name is Anna Yezza Mela, and, um, from November eighteenth to November twenty-second, Enviromental Club will leave the school in a plastic-free lunchroom. Environmental Club will be the school in a plastic-free lunch day challenge from November eighteenth to November twenty-second.
And we invite all of you to do the challenge.
Hi, my name is Alexia Kennedy, and I am in eighth grade. H and S has participated in a zero waste audit in the cafeteria in twenty twenty-three, and with the help of Richard Reed and our cafeteria staff, we implemented some changes to reduce lunchroom waste. Draws are requested versus offered, and we got rid of wasteful fork packets and plastic utensil containers, replacing them with single utensil distribution machines.
And then it's a trade war. I'm in eighth grade from Hyman High School. We discovered during our audit that we can reduce our lunchroom waste from twelve fifty-five gallon garbage bags per day to three if we recycle and eliminate some waste. We've been to implement, uh, more visible sugar tables and come up with a way to, uh, unused products to be taken to the food pantries by volunteer.
See you guys have been working during the summer.
Yeah.
To build up the garden. That, that, that.
Very cool.
These guys are, are made helpers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do our own as well.
What, what did you grow? You said you harvested.
Raspberry, green beans, lettuce, tomatoes, lettuce, herbs, some cilantro and parsley.
So where'd they go?
Donating this to the community?
Well, this summer, it was, it was pretty small still, and so we each took some home, and it was ripe.
Sounds like a good salad.
It was. It was a very good salad, or, um, food for pets. We have some pets at home.
There's enough for pets.
You know, I know that they've, I was, uh, I've worked heavily with the volunteers at the Re Row Campus years ago, like decades ago, probably, when they started putting the garden into place there with the P T A, and a lot of that was done to, like, donate food to the food pantries, uh, both Grafton and Elgantquin. It took time, though, obviously, so I think you guys are definitely on the way, but you can definitely probably talk to some of them and maybe, you know, got some really cool ideas, a way to kind of give back, and it's really cool to do farm-to-table, so congratulations.
Good job.
And I like the review of the cafeteria as well. There's plastic in everything, and everybody from industry on is trying to reduce as much as they can, so.
Yeah, we were talking before we came in, um, we could recycle a lot more. We set to work on our profits. Really, the issue is getting kids through the line and the time we have.
Yeah.
The sorting everything, but then we did the audit, we sit in the lunchroom.
Yeah, that's a lot to go by.
Yeah, that's what we know.
Yeah, I'm aware of some schools that, um, have a large gardens plots outside their, their school, and then they take it, um, like we said before, it's farm-to-table, so they harvest it and then use it in the cafeteria for foods for, um, for the kids directly. So it helps reduce some of the purchasing, uh, that needs to be done on a different scale.
Yeah.
And then it allows people to be involved in that process instead of just, okay, I can pick it out of the line and it's already prepared for me, so.
We need a much bigger harvest.
Yeah, that's a down-the-road, that's not a tomorrow.
But Richard has been open to all of our suggestions. He's been really great to work with, so that is a wonderful idea for us.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good show.
We're gonna deploy.
Yes.
They're trying to let you know.
They want to have a fun.
And parents, you can move up closer. Don't be shy.
Okay, see everyone. One, two, three.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number five, uh, public comments. I don't see anything in the little, uh, area there, so, anybody want to, uh, will come, will move on. Always one with the action at the end there. All right, so moving to number six, revision and adoption of the agenda. Um, any changes we want to the agenda?
I, uh, I would like to, on the consent agenda, that would be number eleven, um, I would like to move policy two point two six five out, um, and have a, remove that from the overall consent agenda, but not move the remainder of the policy itself. Two point two six five is Title Nine grievance procedures, but there's one, two, three, four other ones that are part of that policy revision.
All right, any discussion? Any, uh, second?
A second.
All right, thanks, Ms. Murray. So, uh, I guess we'll, the motion on the table is to, uh, move to adopt the agenda as presented, moving, um, just policy two point two six five, the changes there, out of the consent agenda and have it individualized.
All right.
So, um, looking for a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Pugliano. Can we add a roll call?
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Biddens?
Yes.
Mr. Pugliano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will move ahead with the agenda as noted. So, we'll move to, uh, the, uh, the, the, number seven, the superintendent's report, Miss.
All right, we'll go ahead and start with the donations. Um, we had two donations. Huntley High School Athletic Booster made a one thousand dollar check donation to the high school boys' team, and the Huntley Red Iron Football Club made, um, a donation of five hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for helmets to the high school football team. So, uh, thank you to both of those, to the organizations and clubs, uh, to again support the students that are, are in some of our extracurricular activities. Um, the other, um, items to highlight, just a couple things. Uh, one with our strategic planning, um, we will go ahead, um, very soon here to send out, um, information and invitations. Uh, we'll be getting our steering committee together to look at the various components and timelines. The beginning part of, that will happen mainly in November and December are those three portraits. Portrait of the graduate, portrait of the learning environment, and the portrait of the work environment, looking at elements or characteristics, um, competencies that we want for each of those that will help drive the second half. Um, so some of this will be, um, more, um, invitation, uh, for those components, the larger part where we're looking at the overarching, uh, using these portraits on the extra strategic planning component, uh, will take place more, um, in that January on timeframe, um, but we will want to, uh, get, uh, community members, uh, public, parents, uh, students and staff involved in that. So, uh, information will be going out in the, uh, next couple weeks to, to get volunteers for those pieces, but certainly excited about those three portraits that will help drive kind of that more star view of, hey, here's what we want as we move forward, um, and keeping our, our goal in our mind on those things large scale. Um, second is just, we've talked about the commitment of bringing forward, um, where are we at with our attendance, just so we can keep track. I know we're only into mid, um, October, but, oh my gosh, we are into mid-October. The first, uh, quarter, if you will, is done. Um, and so looking at that, um, I placed a, one graph here, and then a couple of the others, uh, which would be comparison. Um, but looking at, um, our chronic absenteeism, um, average daily attendance in the district, so that would be our E C C all the way through light, even though our school report card doesn't have E C C and light calculated in there. I think we want to set good foundations, um, even with our three and four-year-olds. So, um, we're at ninety-five point one nine percent, um, on average day, um, and then our chronic absenteeism is eleven point seven three, so that is drastically down. Now, we, at this point when this was polled, I believe it was forty-one-ish days, and so ten percent of that would be four or more. Um, and then it was a breakdown of what is trending, chronic, um, nearly chronic, and then no attendance, because again, we look at, uh, different supports or interventions, and so that's on, um, one of the graphs there. And then we could take a look at which grade levels, um, are there larger concerns, um, and they mirror some of the things that we talked about, uh, last year and in the past, so we can, uh, do bigger pushes with some of those grade levels and try to get, um, dig down deep to figure out the why. Um, but then the comparison to look at where we were, um, October to October at last year, I know percentages sound small, um, but it's, it's big when we're looking at the chronic absenteeism. October of twenty twenty-three, we were looking at ninety-two point four percent, and that was ADA for the full month. Um, we'll be able to calculate that here in a couple of weeks, but just for the, the first fifteen days, we're at ninety-four point five percent. Um, and then, I don't know, and with, we could get this one updated in there, so, uh, public can see that, too. But if we look at, um, where things were trending, um, over the last few years, you definitely see, uh, a large jump in, um, the number of students that are not, that it's not an attendance concern total we'll get. And so, um, I think you want to definitely say our messages are getting out there, people are hearing them. Um, however, I think that we're getting back into routines just of society from, um, the times, you know, two years ago and when we were in school all the time. And so I think that a lot of that is just beneficial, and I do think that we're going to see some, um, really great gains as we move forward academically and behaviorally and socially, because of some of these positive with attendance. And then, a couple things, we just, uh, I, I'm going to talk briefly on it, but I won't go too detailed, because I'm going to get, Dr. McCrinder will go more into detail after the survey results from the institute day. Uh, but we did, to finish, um, our, our third institute day, the, the first one in the school year, and, um, bouncing around to all of the buildings and seeing the various things that were, um, all centered around our district goals, uh, that are going to enhance student learning and, and the student environment. Um, it was, it's a lot of positive energy. Um, and I know that, um, we sent out a survey to get feedback. Um, Elle and I put that survey together to, um, get feedback from all of our, uh, staff or those who want to participate in there on what was beneficial, what do they need more of, and how can we structure these days to be best, uh, P D for them. And so just a, a very special thank you to the Elle and I department. They do the large, heavy list on this. We all support, um, but they're utilizing this data and really developing that, uh, for our staff, so thank you for that. Um, last Thursday, I had an opportunity to attend one of the days of L U D A, Large Unit District Association. Um, it was their fall conference, and, uh, just a big takeaway there was a lot of conversation around generative A I. Um, we saw a great presentation from a school district that was using it in a, uh, it was an instructional, I believe, um, special education literacy classroom, and they, um, did a red carpet event. They created their own superheroes and with character and setting and, um, advertisements, and they actually put little videos together, and it was all done through A I, but using their thoughts and ideas. And it was fantastic to see the things that we can do. There are a lot of people who's up, they're afraid of A I, but the, um, opportunities are endless. Uh, there were some other conversations. There was a fantastic speaker who talked about, um, the things that we can do in and out of the classroom in other positions. Um, we'll be bringing some of those little ideas, uh, forward. Um, but we've got to solidify what does our policy and our procedures look like, and Dr. McCrinder, I know you're working with a committee on that, and as I was sitting there listening to the speaker, I thought, you know what, this would be a great, um, uh, policy and procedures that we could bring to T T A, right? Because there's a component that could lie, um, and we did not put it in the policy seven colon one eighty about discipline, because we hadn't, um, flushed out what, we don't want to just be punitive for students using A I. There's a time and a place and a purpose for that, and so we want to be able to develop, what does that look like? So students and staff's expectations around that, not that you use Chat G P T and it's an automatic cheating, because I think that there are, again, ways that we can do that. And so, um, that definitely ties in with some of the, um, charge of that committee, and we'll be bringing some of those things, uh, forward. But it was, it was pretty fantastic to see, uh, things with music. I, it's sort of thinking about our fine arts programs and how we could tie this in, and, um, that's, that's a, a great place, and everything that we think is going to be here today, it's going to be different tomorrow. So it's, it's ever-changing with what we do. Uh, one of the things that came, uh, earlier was a, a call to, um, school districts for staff members to join I S B E's, it's a P D L writing team, um, and the, the purpose of this team is to develop and define profiles of proficiency or performance level descriptors, um, so that that can help enhance, um, just our state assessments, and looking at how do we ensure that we have accurate information, um, about student success. And, um, Laura Jenkins, uh, was selected to, um, be on this committee, and so to have a voice, um, especially at the secondary level, uh, from Huntley is going to be fantastic. And so this, um, these different writing, uh, teams are going to be across content area and from grade three through eleven because of where our state, um, assessments are. So I'm going to assume she's going to be in her content area at the high school level, uh, but it's, it's great to have a voice at the table for looking at, um, positive changes that can come down for assessments at the state level. And then the other component was just some, um, I was reporting that, uh, that, any questions?
I just, uh, to Laura Jenkins, uh, she's always, she's been, you know, out front all the time, as long as I've known her in the school district, uh, in high school, I think she's, that's a big job, and I'm just really happy to see her put herself out there like that. That's, uh, that's great. That's great for the district, too.
Um, I would say two things, um, on the attendance. I think that you and the administration, um, and the spirits need to be applauded, because this is trending exactly the way we wanted to, and I don't think that anybody would be shocked to see some dips occur. I think it's a learning lesson, but, um, I, I look and think, we got through September with an increase in attendance, and we had a holiday because we had Labor Day, and now we got through October, and this went through the fifteenth, and we had a four-day weekend. So the message is getting out there, and I think that this is amazing progress. I'd like to see the chart that was put out there with the comparison between last year and this year, especially at the grade level, so that we can understand, like, where those messages might be getting missed, where, where maybe we need to tighten it up, or just maybe a different approach. Um, so that was on the attendance, but I think to be applauded.
And one thing I'd like to say, I appreciate you saying the dip might occur, especially as we hit the winter month here with, um, illness, because if you are sick, we do want you home. We've also gotten some feedback that I think we're all looking at, um, uh, to. to make sure the intent of absences around illness or doctor's appointments are meeting the needs that we need them to meet. And so we're looking at that, and we may recommend some tweaks of some things there or different procedures to help parents, but not, again, take away that, oh, we're going to go because there's some pushback. But there are some very valid points of maybe how different levels are looking at that and that makeup works. So we want to make sure we are still assisting the students while they're out.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very good point. For the report that you did on LUDU with the AI, so I, I'm in technology. I understand AI is part of our everyday life. I would look at it too, that there's some definite pros that can be there, but there has to be some cautions that we have with that. And I do think it's more from the disciplinary perspective. I think that we need to look at it from a policy perspective. And I was reading an article this morning, I think it was in the Northwest Herald, about some judges from McHenry County came in and talked at Prairie Ridge. And they talked to the students at the high school about some of the issues that go on with not just AI, but social media. And there have been things that have been coming up, especially in this county, about the way AI is not intended to be used. So I think we need to contemplate that into our policy. But I also think it would be great. AI is, it's a new technology, and I think that the fear from especially our generation is we don't understand it. So when we are putting that committee together, let's have some student involvement, because they're going to be the ones that might be advocating too on the best use of AI. It's not just, oh, AI, let me cheat on the test, or let me cheat on the paper. It's how do we use it in a responsible manner? And we might get some buy-in from the student population.
Absolutely. You brought up that social media component. We can do so much around putting those parameters and really being clear about what are those expectations of you can and cannot do. And that would be part of our policies and handles components there. But we also have to do some educating because more on technology, we want to make sure that there's safeguards and things where everybody's feeling comfortable with that piece. So that would be a component as well. And I know, I believe you had a meeting or two, and there will definitely, especially at the high school and middle school, getting some of the student voice on how. One of the things that was, they did within just minutes, they took words and put it into a song generator, and you picked out the type of style of music that you wanted based on your own words, and it put it to music. And it was, it was interesting. It was catchy and it stuck in my head for a while. And then somebody gave an example of one they did earlier, it wasn't even a year, but they did one, then they put it into that same app, again, and generated with the exact same things, but even a year later, how different the pictures and the music were, because it is just evolving that fast. And so it was really, it was really interesting. But yeah, we've got to be careful and we will work with that.
Just a couple of comments on the AI side of things. I read a story of this morning about, it was a Massachusetts student who was disciplined for using AI. And he's suing the school district because it wasn't called out in the handbook. And so it's something we have to be cautious with. And it doesn't sound like this was a student just cheating. I don't know. But I mean, they talked about it, you know, perfect S and P score and all this other stuff in the article. It seemed like he was trying to use it for quote unquote good. And so we do need to think about that because we don't want it to be unnecessary.
And I think whether it's AI or anything else, especially as we're going through curriculum reviews, I think those could be some really good places to have discussion around some of that as well, because you've got staff there looking at things. It is on a regular basis, not as fast as AI, but that we talk about those things and how it might fit into different units or different activities and assignments.
And then just to finish, just a shout out to the boosters. Thank you so much for the high school and bring so much money with donations and the volunteers that happen. I know they're looking for a bunch of volunteers this weekend. So help out, and you can help out your different activities and sports. So they do a lot of good things. That team is wonderful. All right, moving to number eight, the Department of Commerce.
Good evening. I have a couple of comments from my update that I provided. First of all, our state accountability ratings are going to be shared officially on October 30th. They'll be released from the state level and viewable on the Illinois Report Card website. As a reminder, there's designations that each school receives, and those range from exemplary commendables, targeted or comprehensive support in their newer category from last year with intensive support. And that rating, as they follow a lot of different success indicators, which includes proficiency rates on assessments, student growth, the graduation rate, attendance, and some other meta indicators that go into like college grade writing and et cetera, just kind of breaks down. So we're excited to kind of see that data and allow that as a piece to our public guide into how it can help improve our learning for students. But I want to let you know that it'll be coming out soon. And we'll be highlighting a lot of that data during our curriculum workshop on November 7th. It has been altering that date all day. And so we'll be highlighting that information for all of you there. Also, with satchel polls, we did just culminate the fall satchel polls trainer. I did go ahead and include the number of students who did opt out. So we had two hundred and fifty nine individuals opt out, which is about three percent of our population. And results are being shared with our families via email. And our next steps include principals have been using that data to help drive their school improvement plan, as well as trying to analyze that data alongside our academic data when we're trying to provide intervention for students. And so our data teams, I think the slum bars you shared last meeting as well, I've talked about those as well, they really do use that data to help understand that whole picture of a child. And so those conversations are occurring, and we will keep you updated on that as a continued pilot throughout the school year. Ms. Jacobson has been working on evaluating our programming for our EL learners. A lot of work has been going into diving into the ratings on our school report cards for our students who are ELs. We know that's an area that we need to continue to prioritize as our numbers continue to grow. And so there's an area within the school report card called English Language Learners Progress to Proficiency, where the state of Illinois, that's the number of years that students must reach a certain score to be considered proficient in English. And if you meet that criteria, then you're considered to have been meeting the expectations. And if not, you aren't. And so Ms. Jacobson has really been taking an in-depth dive into those numbers. And we're seeing that at our sixth through twelfth grade level, we have quite a few students who have a whole lot of growth that still need to happen. We're seeing it growing more at our K five level, but we need to really continue to hone in at our middle school and high school level. So I'm excited about some of that work and beginning to share it out with the impact and the dual language steering committee, as well as some staff. And we're excited to bring some recommendations for you guys later on this school year. And then finally, the elementary literacy update, last, I guess it was summer, technically in June, the board approved a slow rollout of benchmark advance for our K five students, as well as Adalante, which is for the dual language classrooms. And actually, tonight, our teachers who are utilizing that met with Ms. Mohn. And we are hearing overwhelming feedback that is a positive resource. We heard the expected feedback of there's a lot of materials, but it's great materials that help them differentiate for our EL students, our students of IEPs. And so they're appreciative of it. We also heard that the program is rigorous, which is something we want. We want to be able to make sure that we are helping our students meet that level. But the challenge of that is not all students have had this program from kindergarten through fifth grade, so they're having to figure out how to kind of scaffold or intercept that in that way. So we're excited to bring the remainder of that contract to you guys in November. We have a one meeting month, but we presented the initial rollout. So we just wanted to give you that update. And we'll have an in-depth memo, but that will be coming up in November 14th board meeting. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Question on, I don't know if it's under the elementary literacy update portion or the evaluation for the English learners. It might be under both. But it looks like we've been working primarily with the monolingual staff, but has there been a forum, just coming from the impact last week ago, has there been a forum with those dual language staff to also get kind of their feedback from their perspective on how this is all rolling out for both programs?
I'm very glad you asked that. That was a great question. So just this week, Ms. Jacobson, along with one of our teachers that taught at the second grade in her dual language classroom, attended a training with benchmark to help determine the bridge between the two languages to better understand it. They are currently developing some professional learning or planning to pull the teachers in the next two weeks to provide that. What the teacher, what Ms. Jacobson is sharing that she heard from the teacher is that it's been helpful to get to know the material. So sometimes if you start, you sometimes have to live a little bit in what you have before you start to make changes. And so she saw benefit in that. So all that to say, we will be, we're doing that the very near future. The elementary bilingual happens at E2 night, which is why I did share that, but it is coming in the next two weeks. Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Any other questions? The Ryan Director of Communications and Public Engagements, Ms. Barrow.
Hi. So tonight, I submitted for you guys a monthly polling report. Just wondered if anybody had any questions on that? Or any other questions?
No, no, thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Barrow. We'll go on to number 10, the president's report. Just a couple of items. Just the one to note, I won't be in the next meeting. I'll be out of the country. So Ms. Murray will, in the evening. Thank you. And then one thing to bring up here that we'll be doing in the next meeting is that we've been given the resolutions report here. This is for the triple I conference. I will go through that. We'll have a couple of items on the November board meeting one, which we need to appoint someone to kind of handle that at the triple I meeting. And then we need to go through each of these. I think what we did last year, which was pretty efficient, was we, we all kind of checked off what our votes were, so we could kind of do that offline, so we don't have to read them all in kind of the meeting. We did all of our updates. I think we're going to go ahead and doing that again as well. I think we're going to enlist Ms. Mohn to help us on that as well, and we can Google it for them.
They put it on the back page, so if the numbers are out of order, that was on purpose. That was a little bit earlier in the pack, but that can kind of help guide you with your support or hope kind of piece in that.
We'll get that too. So thank you for that. Moving in, there are a couple of interesting ones in there. And then just another comment, I saw in an article that Northwestern Hospital is building a pretty nice office building that's supposed to support the ninety five million dollar project with three hundred employees. So that's positive. I consider that under new construction for us. I guess my request here is to find out what is the tax impact of this. You don't need to answer immediately, Mr. Almiron, unless you want to. But do you think that's going to be a positive impact?
Well, I would love to tell you that it's going to be positive, but more than likely it's going to fall under the hospital setting, and it'll be tax exempt.
Several of those buildings are not under hospital setting.
The only, yeah, the only building on that property currently that is not a tax exempt is the Health Bridge Workout Facility. The medical offices used to be tax exempt, but when they built the hospital, they attached the medical offices to the hospital and made those medical offices tax exempt. And that happened years ago. So, but I could, I could look into that a little more to confirm that they're going down that road to attach those to the hospital.
It's not under, I've seen they're not.
Well, not before, the medical offices aren't attached, but technically meaning
Under the umbrella.
Under the umbrella. Yeah, that's what I mean by that.
There's a couple of big assessments in that area that went down quite a bit, and we actually lost some tax revenue from that. So curious if it's, if they're not, then that's unfortunate.
Yeah, and we should be, we should be receiving the preliminary EAB reports soon from the counties. And once I receive those, because in the month of November, we will be looking at the preliminary tax levy. So I should be getting those within a week or two. And I'll be able to kind of dig into that a little more by talking to the assessors in McHenry and Cape County.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Almiron. That's all I have. Any board discussions? All right, with that, we'll move on. Why don't we tackle the policy that was pulled out first, if we're okay with that? So we'll start off with some discussions slightly, if you want to.
Yes. So my biggest concern with policy two point two six five. When we have discussed this, our expectation is that we put a policy together for our district, for our district to roll out to all of our schools to be enforced as a district. We've been really successful in rolling out other parts of our policy. We've rewritten a lot of our behavioral, we've rewritten our attendance policies. We've rolled them out in uniform because that way we're able to have a consistent message to all the schools. We have a consistent message to all the staff, all the students. It helps if a student moves from one school to another, the expectation is the same. With this particular policy, we have now, when we first talked about this a couple of months ago, we only had three schools that had opted out. Now we have five schools that are part of like the opt out, or they're part of the state of the policy. They're part of a lawsuit now that's in federal court, I believe, and that's Conley, Heinemann, the high school, which is like really about a third of our student population, just because it's so large, Testic and Martin. So that leaves just three other schools, McCavin, Marlowe, Leggie, and then ECC and Light, although they're schools, they're not part of our school report card, if I'm correct. But the majority of our students now are not going to be covered under this policy. So now we have a policy that we're putting into place for our district that we can't enforce for more than half of the students. And I feel like that's just a very confusing message for us to put out there. I think it's confusing for us as an administration. It's confusing for the staff. It's confusing for families and parents. So I would like to pull it out and have further discussion on this and how we really approach this to have it implemented district wide. That's the attempt.
So the recommendation for all of these would be that they would be going to the December committee for further discussion than that second reading, if you will. So this would be the first reading. So it would then, the recommendation is not to, previous tonight would be to go into that, that second reading. And we did not do that in November because we don't have a committee to hold. So the recommendation would be to bring that back to a December committee as a whole, or to be further discussed or moved to the regular meeting for approval. And I think one of the concerns I would have, just pulling one, there were some changes based on certain things being moved from like policy two, quote, two sixty or some of the others that were removed there and put into this revised two point two six five. So with changes on some being potentially approved and others being moved to this policy, there would be things that would not lie potentially anywhere because they were taken from one and then moved to this fully revised.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused because this is about a uniform grievance procedure for all sorts of things. So if we pull this entirely as a policy, then we're not going to be having grievance procedures for sexual harassment, Civil Rights Act, bullying, all sorts of things that are listed under here. And that opens up a deeper can of worms than just being opposed to any kind of Title IX conflicts.
But isn't there already existing?
Well, no, we still have.
You would leave the existing policy in place.
We just aren't going, I'm requesting us not to move forward with the changes until we determine how to implement them in a uniform manner to all students for our district. I would, I would recommend that we continue with our current policy that covers other things that are part of this grievance procedure in its current format.
And I was mistaken. I was looking two sixty, not two sixty five. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the decision here is really just to pause while the court sort it out on this, because it's gone through this twenty six days, and they're jumbled. We've gotten thrown into this mix. We're in this confusing situation where some of our schools have to follow the new rules, some of us don't. It's terrible for us to deal with it. So in the end, since two thirds of our students don't fly to the new rules, let's just hold off. I think that's the gist of the trend.
I would, I would have a, I think we would find it very confusing if something was to fall under this particular policy. And it was for a student that currently is, let's say at Marlowe, which is not part of the lawsuit. And let's say they transferred to Heinemann, and now Heinemann is part of that lawsuit. How do we interpret those rules then? How do we enforce that policy? And so I would probably echo what Mr. Bittman is saying and pause the work on this particular policy. I understand that there's other areas, other policies that probably cascade into there. there, and that that means having to pause those as well, and, and move things around to address, to address those specifically. I think the other four policies are, are fine to move forward, because we're implementing them in a uniform manner for the district. This particular one, though, has some serious consequences.
But if we take out Title IX for, because some of these are taking Title IX out, and moving that for the schools that are not named, then Title IX would not lie anywhere for them, because they would be out of 2, 260, and not having the 2.265 and some of the other pieces there. I think one of the others is just making sure that we are getting full understanding of what does that mean for our district as the case is out there and that up against litigation.
Would we be tabling then 2.260 and 65, potentially, since they bleed into one another?
So here's what I'd say, these are for, again, first reading, I would push this forward just so it's there for the second reading. Second reading is really what matters, quite frankly. Buy yourself some time, see how this unwinds. Probably won't completely by then, but you can pull it. Want to pull it at that point in time. What happens is you set, set everything backwards, if you, if you're going to pull this right now. So I, I wish-
I understand, I, I know that, like, Mrs. Woods has put in a significant amount of time in trying to rewrite these policies. I don't want that falling, you know, with work not being done. Actually, I'm not trying to waste her time.
Right.
So that would be my only concern, but I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Allmeyer.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, because this isn't, today isn't the end-all, be-all, and we just move it forward, have it there in December, you can decide whether it needs to get completely yanked, if it's doing, if things aren't decided enough for us at that point. But I would, as a crossover from what's been pushed into this, I think you want to have something ready in place, basically, go forward at that.
I guess just a couple of thoughts on this. I made some suggestions in the last meeting about some improvements I think to this. Are we considering those? Do we look at that?
But to the first teacher part, I believe it was, the, yep. And so those would be updated once we, we could do it subsequently and bring those two that out, and look at those as, what would those procedural changes look like under 260 and 265, and what those small differences?
And I think, and it's just for anybody who's watching this, right, Title IX isn't going away by anything we're doing here. Title IX still exists, one way or the other. And we still have, from all of Illinois, the law, which also had its fingers into issues like this. And I don't think anybody on this board suggests that we should have any harassment or anything that should be promoted or supported. So just to counter Mr. Troy's comments there, that's, that's not the intent here. The intent here is try to make it, try to slowly change this, and to make sure that we don't have to revert back to it if a court decides in six months that this isn't going to go forward. Like, we don't want to wreck, I think the intent. Let's, let's wait till it sorts out, I think, to be my opinion.
I would agree.
Any other comments? So, how do we want to proceed?
No, I don't.
That's a, was a negative. Motion to table the-
I will, I will, I can make the one.
What, is, is that the, the point?
Well, I, I, I'm just thinking-
Is it a motion to put it back in, or a motion to re-
A motion to move it forward. If you make a motion, move it forward. If it doesn't go forward, then it's essentially tabled.
Yeah. So do you want a motion to-
So I'll just, I'll-
I'm motioning to pull it out.
Well, you want a motion to table it, I guess, to do the thing that you're-
I, 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 I motion to table policy 2.265 provisions.
I think if we do that, we need to motion to table any of the policies that have Title IX. Make it clear.
I will motion to table 2.265, as well as any ancillary policies.
Is it all viable?
Not yet.
So essentially, you're motioning to table 11.1 for any visit at a later time.
Correct. I will motion to table 11.1.
Do you have a second?
Second, I'm sorry, be a little bit verbal, I, I can't hear. What is that? In the mic, in the, please, in the mic.
I'm motioning to table 11.1, house your revisions, the latest.
Overall, okay.
Mr. Thompson, second to that, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Can I ask a question real quick? As far as what Mr. Quaglano was saying, if we don't pass this, or if someone like Dan is doing, it's like, if we push it through, through December, because we don't want to have anything pulled up, I understand what that's saying, but if we're consenting to everything, what is the difference? I mean, it's like saying you passed through, but we could pull it whatever in December.
I think one of the things where, if we had a difference, if we, or only, if the recommendation on there was to table 2.265, and the others moved forward to December for the second reading, and then were pushed forward to vote on, we're going to have, um-
Inflicting-
Right, there's going to be, all of the Title IX language was moved to this new policy. And so you've got, whether it's different schools, under different policies, you've got different policies with gaps of, first of that grievance procedure mainly, is that, you know, that it would be contradicting one another. So it could be, some would be moving forward in January, and then some would be maybe later, and, yeah.
But, but the way this, the way this is coming across is that the policy supersedes the law. Because if the policy, no, 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 but that's how this is coming across. Because if the law still exists, and the policy is in conflict with it, the law supersedes our policy.
So the components that are in there, right, with the law, when we look at groups, Illinois law is going to stand over what our policy says.
Correct.
So the, the major differences in tabling this would be in the grievance procedure, component of investigator, those steps and those timelines, that's the major difference that would happen there. All other components, Illinois law is going to supersede what our policy says.
Right. Right, because if, if this doesn't move forward, then we're saying we're not, we're reverting to the old policy for the entire district. We move this forward, then the ones that, the schools that are unaffected will be, will be ruled by the new policy, and in the cases that are in question, that would revert essentially to whatever is in case law, or whatever is in the court system.
So let's have that discussion a little bit. Let's say, let's say we table this for today, when this isn't in our policy, because it won't be in our policy until the early of September, as it is right now. So if today, there's a Title IX case that happens at Marlowe, our administration should be administering the new Title IX rules. Whether or not this policy says one way or the other, they should be doing them. And the same thing is true, if it happens in Heinemann, we should be following the old, no matter what this policy says. We are going to follow the federal law and the guidelines. So the, the intent here is, why change this policy right now, when there's so much uncertainty about it? In, in the sense of, why go through the paperwork effort, when it's not going to change anything for any students and how we apply it? And two-thirds of our students, if they open up the handbook, they will see what they are looking at, but what they are, how it would be applied to them, if they were doing that. But the one-third that are in the schools that aren't, it won't be there. If we do the opposite, then you've got one-third looking at the right thing, and two-thirds not, all because we got enjoined to this court case. So this is a confusing situation. I hate it. I would much rather have it so that it was district-wide, but we have to make a decision one way or the other, unless we write a policy, and Ms. Woods doesn't want to do this, that combines both of them.
Yep, and regardless, whatever the situation with these policies, or any, we'll follow what the law states.
We're buying time.
We're essentially waiting until it sorts it out.
Indefinitely, because the court case could come back in two weeks, it could come back in two years. So we, we don't know when that's going to have closure.
Correct, but until it has closure, we have five schools that don't apply to this, and five schools that do. This, this is, it-
No, I, I agree, right, no, it's, it's a conundrum, and, and it's a quagmire, I get it.
So, the, the motion has been on the table, there has been a second. Any other discussion before we go forward? Let's have a roll call vote.
Mr. Bittman.
I'm going to vote, make sure my yes vote is to table.
Yes, yes, yes would be to table. My, my vote's going to be no.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy. Mr. Troy.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
So we vote to table it for three, will revisit it slightly again as December, as the committee evolves. All right, discussion, and complicated issues. So we will move on to the, the rest of the consent agenda, which is 11.2 through 11.7. I'll make a motion to seek approval, adoption of the back consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, so that, that's seven zero. We move to action items, so we'll go back to Dr. Prinbo, who did some fantastic negotiating for 12.1. Do you have any comments?
This was going to be on our consensus agenda, so nothing has changed in regards to recommendations. Our literacy materials were placed on third day review back in September 5th, and we were able to work through our quote, and were able to get a 5% reduction, and so we saved about $25,000, $24,000 off of this. And so because it was put on review with a larger quote, we felt it was important to bring it to the separate line item. Most of that is based off of our enrollment, as well as just some negotiating on numbers a little bit more. So we would get to for, I guess, a voice call, though. Is that the right word? Chatting call, voice call.
All right. Any, any discussion over Dr. Prinbo about this? All right, so I'll make a motion to approve 12.1, secondary literacy, nine to twelve material representation. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, with that, 12.1 passed seven zero. We move down to 12.2, the HR personnel report. Dr. Derry, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, with that, I'll move to, I'll make a motion to approve 12.2, the HR personnel report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have the roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, with that, that's seven zero. We move to 12.3, supplemental purchase orders and accounts tabled. Mr. Allmeyer, does he have any comments about it?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve 12.3, supplemental purchase orders and accounts tabled. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglano. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and approve seven zero, and then we will move to 13, our second public comment. I did just see a piece of paper get thrown in there. Thank you. All right, this is Delner.
Hi, I just had a couple of questions for clarification, because I was following all that, and I wasn't quite clear. So if we table everything, like, we basically have a two-thirds, one-third, three-in situation, where two-thirds of our schools are not following the new 2024 due to injunction, we don't know what the result of that's going to be, the other third is. Now, if we table, you know, all of the, you know, guidelines and all the changes, I could be wrong, but I want to say that in one of the previous board meetings, it was mentioned that some of the language had been taken out of our policy box, like the district policy, because it was going to be put into Title IX. And I may have misunderstood that, but I know there were some things that were changed. My question is, like, that's gone, like, like, where are we right now? So like, a couple of questions. If there's a pregnant student at Heinemann High School, or Heinemann High School, Conley High School, in a month, does she have none of the protections that would be under 2024, because there is an injunction, so, oh, well? If a student moves from Heinemann to Marlowe, or vice versa, do their protections change? What happens if, like, we have all these, I live where there is, like, well, everyone lives where there are a million new developments. What happens when those parents move in? How are we going to be like, okay, so you're going to this school, and here are your rules and your protections, you're going over there, so you're only going to get like, like, I don't know, like, 80% best of luck? Like, that really isn't great. And I know that, like, we didn't do that as a board, like, you guys didn't do that, this is just where we are. More importantly, too, I know we do have students that are greatly affected by this, so what happens if we get sued? Like, does it depend on, like, what school they're from? Do they have a case? Do they move? Like, I know in 2018, Chicago, like, lost their girl running, because they were, like, not in compliance, like, how does this all work? I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't, I know Mr. Allmeyer knows, like, almost everything. He probably does it though, right off of that, and I apologize, for how much money we get from the state, but I feel like it's not nothing. Or, and what we get federally, it may not affect state dollars, but I know it affects federal dollars, and I'm pretty sure we don't get, like, zero. So like, how does all that work? If we just, like, sit for two months? I'm just kind of worried about that.
So I guess, I'll indulge the questions, if that's okay. And personally, I don't think the answer is very clear. I think it comes down to the court case. It is our intention to support every student going through here to make sure that they are not harassed in any sort of way. The Illinois state law protects a whole host of things that are covered by the new Title IX changes.
But it doesn't do all of them. Just to be clear, it doesn't cover all of them. There are some very specific things in the language that are not covered.
So, so maybe we can take that offline. I mean, my understanding is that some of the, at least the big things that are changing, don't really change for Illinois, but do change for Mississippi. So, just to make it clear, Illinois is a little bit different. They have the Human Rights Amendment that passed in 2006, that affects gender identity and a whole bunch of different things that are covered in there. So some could actually argue that the Title IX is actually looking more like an Illinois state law, but not for the rest of the country. So I don't think we know the, the answer to the question that you're asking specifically, but my expectation is that we would treat every case to try to find an accommodative approach to support any student that had an issue with it. This is my expectation of the administration to work through this. The, the concerns that I have about the changes to Title IX are more on the grievance side, and the questions that I have asked before was on the punitive side, is how do we punish people? Because my concern is around some of the free speech change. We can talk about that and take that offline.
Well, and I also, the one that color my concern about the punitive or lack thereof, like, I, I feel, I feel like that could go on both sides. It really depends on who is determining that. I know that from, let's say, eight years ago versus four years ago, the burden of proof, shall we say, whatever that we call the standard, was higher, and then it was much, you know, you had to, like, practically get assaulted in the middle of the hallway to have anything done versus, I mean, there are some very big differences there. And so that's incredibly concerning.
And my request was that we should be very clear of the burden of evidence we're using in the grievance property, to make it clear. I didn't make a judgment of all.
No, no, absolutely, but for the next two months, we're not.
My also sharing your concern is that we should always, we should not have one person making the investigation and the decision because depending on who that person is, they might swing one way or the other. And we should always have that counterbalance with two processes, which is why I was asking.
Which is great, but like, that will go into effect though right now, right? Because we're tabling it, none of that will be affected.
Those changes haven't been made yet either, so that is what I'm requesting to have come forward. We will bring this forward in the December meeting. We'll have hopefully a couple more months and we'll understand where these things lie, the changes.
I think I would be having, we could go down and Dr. Zare, myself, we could sit down and kind of look at some of those specifics. The piece of that some things were taken out, they're still there because the recommendation was it would be tabled. Some of those things would be removed from two six zeros and put specifically for two six five. It's not getting rid of them, it's separating for the different grievance processes. Actually, in our handbook, there had been approval of our handbook to mirror Illinois law. And so there had been previous discussions about some of the wording and the language that was put in there and then how might that impact? So actually, if we went in and we looked at, you brought up pregnancy. That's in our handbook under harassment already. We did those steps earlier because we wanted to make sure we were following the recommendations of press, which mirror the Illinois state law. So those things actually had been already updated and approved. So nothing's been removed right now. It was the recommendation is taking some and moving them to this new policy. So by that recommendation of tabling it, we would still follow everything that's in two point two six zero. If we wanted to go down and look at some of the specifics, we would be happy to look because what our intent, we're going to go through all of these. If there were any complaints or whatnot, it's actually following the current, which is a little bit more in-depth and detailed. Dr. Zare, quote me if I'm wrong on that. So some of those changes, we're still going to do that. We want what's best for all of our students and our families. But I would love to sit down and look at those so that we're making sure there's nothing that's in limbo land that we need to talk about because that would be right for our kids and our families.
And like, how are we going to keep parents updated about that? Because if I weren't here, I would have no idea about this, this whole fun pile of, you know, like, complications. And that's really concerning because we have, you know, so many families and not everyone can watch this. You guys are great, but people are busy, you know, they can't all attend under virtually or in person. How are we going to be following up with parents so that they know what's going on and, you know, what's being pushed forward and what's being tabled and like, just, I think this is really important.
So I think one of the things that go about after the regular board meeting and the committee and the whole are pushes in our parent's letter about highlights from the board meeting. With those, I think that one of the things, because I do believe whether it's with our handbook, state law, or based on where things lie in our policies right now, things are covered. But if there are some pieces as we've looked at and if it is something that we look at and you bring up and we go, oh, that isn't here because of tabling this? I think that would be something we would want to share with our larger community. I think we have to identify what those are based on, because I just pulled up handbook here and I, don't quote me how old month that was, when we updated those pieces. But I know a lot of components were put in there, definitely you brought up, you know, pregnant mothers or students and we want to make sure, and that's already in there. So that's not really in our policy piece yet because of these changes, but it is in our handbook because of state law. So we could definitely look at those side by side and just see if there are any gaps.
And then just my last question is, because again, we have this two-thirds, one-third, you know, complication thing going on right now. For the one-third that is not part of the injunction, will we be at risk of losing our federal funding because we are not moving with the pace that we should be to that federal law? Like, because I didn't, because I understood it and I could be wrong, I didn't really think it was really like an option.
I think in order to lose federal funding, we have to actually be proven that we're not trying to follow it. And I think the expectation from this board, even though we're at four three, it's seven zero, and I think the administration, that we will support Title IX rights and we will follow the right law. What's changing here is the guidance at which they will judge the Title IX. I guess that's the case. So it doesn't change your title.
It's a lot of money.
Right, it's all changes a little bit, but a lot of that's already covered in all the lights of law, at least what we've been read into.
Now, will federal law take into account that, oh, we're just following the state law? Or are they going to be like, no, you're, you know what I mean, like?
So I think people could have an action if they engage it again. If there's no action. Yeah, we, we, let's take those offline and dig into a little bit of parts.
I just sent you.
I appreciate the questions and I think that you're asking things that other people want to ask, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, with that, I'm going to move to restart closed session. I'm going to move it to enter into closed session at eight oh seven PM on Thursday, October seventeenth, ten forty-four.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? All right, move back there.